Good evening. The August 8th, 2017 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Meara, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to acknowledge Superintendent Meara, who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening, Board, Madam Chair, Mr. Gibbs, Brenda. Hello, everybody. We are about to start a new school year, so it's my honor to be here as our first, I call it our first cohort begins. As we were saying, as we were prepping for the professional development this week, that pre-game is over and it's first quarter, and we are entering the field ready. So I would like to start tonight with the pledge. Would you please join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As I reflect back to the afternoon when I had the honor of taking the oath of office as superintendent, I started my office time with a prayer, and I thought how appropriate to do so this evening, as well as we are getting ready to welcome a little over forty-three thousand students and over six thousand employees back. I'd like to read from "A Prayer for Children" by Ina Hughes, which actually, when I was in my undergrad program, a professor read to us, and it stayed in my heart since then. So "A Prayer for Children," and it's funny, the first slide. We pray for children who put chocolate fingers everywhere, who like to be tickled, who stomp in puddles and ruin their new pants, who sneak popsicles before supper, who erase holes in math workbooks, but not anymore in elementary, who can never find their shoes. And we pray for those who stare at photographers from behind barbed wire, who've never squeaked across the floor in new sneakers, who never counted potatoes, who were born in places we wouldn't be caught dead, who never go to Disney, who live in an X-rated world. We pray for children who bring us sticky kisses and fistfuls of dandelions, who sleep with the dog and bury the goldfish, who hug us in a hurry and forget their lunch money, who cover themselves with Band-Aids and sing off-key, sorry, Ms. McCall, who squeeze toothpaste all over the sink and who slurp their soup. And we pray for those who never get dessert, who watch their parents watch them die, who have no safe blanket to drag behind, who can't find any bread to steal, who don't have any rooms to clean up, whose pictures aren't on anybody's desk or dresser, whose monsters are real. We pray for children who spend all their allowance before Tuesday, who throw tantrums in the grocery store and picket their food, who like ghost stories, who shove dirty clothes under the bed, who never rinse out the tub, who get visits from the tooth fairy, who don't like to be kissed in front of the carpool, who squirm in church and scream on the phone, whose tears we sometimes laugh at and whose smiles make us cry. And we pray for those whose nightmares come in the daytime, who will eat anything, who have never seen a dentist, who aren't spoiled by anybody, who go to bed hungry and cry themselves to sleep, who live and move but have no being. We pray for children who want to be carried and for those who must, for those we never give up on, and for those who don't ever get a chance, for those we smother, and for those who will grab the hand of anybody kind enough to offer. And I am proud to lead a district where we have over six thousand employees who are going to take the hand of every child on Thursday morning and lead them to success. I'll go ahead from here, ma'am, to save time. I recommend approval of the agenda for the August 8th, 2017 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recorded included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And there's an opposed like sign. And the motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 20th, 2017 administrative briefing and work session?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, see and none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and there's an opposed like sign. And the motion passed, five zero. Dr. Jonathan Grantham, Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, please come forward and introduce those who participated in the Marion Oaks Seventh Annual Back-to-School Bash. Maybe.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Member, Superintendent, Mr. Gibbs. We have a celebration, I was celebrating in the hallway, I have a celebration of our Marion Oaks community. They started this, where's it, beginning of last year, I believe. We went to a luncheon, Ms. King, at the community center, and that's kind of how it always began, all began. So I'd ask the principals, if you'll please come, the principals of the Marion Oaks community, And Dr. Dewise, I'll ask you to come start and talk and tell what we're doing here. This is a celebration, and it's a community effort, and some of you have came out and witnessed what they're doing, but these two principals have gotten together and said, "We are one large community, we're going to help all of our children." So it's been, I know of two events that started, so Dr. Dewise, will you just kind of introduce who these young people are and what you're doing in the community?
Good afternoon, everybody. Madam Superintendent, Madam Board Chair, and everyone on the panel, I'm Dr. Dewise over at Sunrise Elementary, the principal there. These two fine people are the principals of Marion Oaks Elementary and also the principal of Horizon Academy, Mrs. Gwen and Mr. Mayor. So, as you can see, we're color coordinated because we are all one family. And on a more serious note, we really got together this summer to try to figure out how we could bring our community together and make it a community school, but at the same time, we are working together because I'm a little bit more veteran, I'm not going to say older, and then they're a little bit less seasoned and less veteran, and so we're really planning a lot together. We've been knocking on doors, we've invited the community in, we've been out in the community, but the brainchild of the whole event was actually Mr. Mayor, and we kind of helped him out with that. Our focus is to bring the community into our schools. We want to have community schools because we are truly in a community of people who really love their children and who want to be on our campuses, and we're finding lots and lots of ways to make that happen. So we've got a lot of donors, we've got a lot of volunteers that are potential, and then we have a lot of parents who are going to come in and try to help us make things a little bit better regarding parental engagement and being advocates for their children, so I'm going to let them talk. And then we need to also introduce our assistant principals because without them, we can't really do the grunt work, so would you ladies like to come up too? Dr. Thornton, all of you guys come up.
Gentlemen.
Good evening. After we got appointed, it was obvious that the schools were a little different. There aren't many neighborhood schools. I grew up up north where everything was a neighborhood school. We wanted not just the kids to be part of the school, but the families. One of the things that we talked about was the community center at Marion Oaks, and it doesn't get used as much as it could. One of the things we're doing is we're not meeting in our schools, we're meeting at the community center. So the families, we can go to the families as much as they can come to us. We are knocking on doors, we're asking the families what do they need from us? We have ninety percent free reduced lunch. So there are families in need, not just students in need. When I came to Horizon, they talked about this back-to-school bash they had every year, and it wasn't going to happen this year because it kind of gone down the last couple of years, wasn't much participation, and I just said, "Okay," because I'm the new guy and I'm not going to rock the boat right now. And we had five calls in two days, want to know when the event was. And these were from family members, these weren't from kids, they want to know when it was, they wanted to meet everyone. We met with the, Ms. McGuire was great with getting us, so we had a meeting at the community center with the community center liaison and the principals, and it was, we talked, it was nothing about families and what the families are more important than schools and are just as important as the kids are. So in a matter of about four weeks, we managed to get about a thousand backpacks set up with school supplies. The great thing was, at Horizon, I didn't do it. I had a list of things that needed to get done, and the biggest culprit of everything going right was Sharon Diaz.
She's a clerk who wasn't paid for the summer, and... She was there every day?
She was there every day, along with about four or five others. And then we have a student named Hughes, I don't know Hughes' last name, he's in Dunellen High School right now, and he came every day in the summer to volunteer, and they're stuffing backpacks, and they're asking what else they can do. They really want to be involved, the parents out there want their school, they want, I don't know if they want it back, they just want their school. And everyone has trouble with SAC, we decided we're going to work together and have one big SAC between the three schools, and we'll meet with them and we'll meet their needs as much as they'll meet our needs. So I just want to do, Dr. Thornton, she's my APC, she's the one that told me what had to be done. Mr. Perry kind of walked in this late, he was APD, and everyone behind us, I got Sharon Diaz back there, Glenn Jones, he's an attendance clerk, and I say attendance clerk like it's something demeaning, but it's not, he's in all summer, and we're trying to get tetanus shots updated. So the ones he can't get, we're knocking on doors saying, "Need your kid's shots." I mean, we're trying to be proactive, and the families, I think, really appreciate it. I've got Ms. Mullins and Ms. Marlowe, and I had twenty-four other volunteers at the event, and the countless others that were just great. Ms. Gwen, and as Ms. Dewise mentioned, she's a little more seasoned, and so she kind of, she pointed us in the right direction about what had to be done. The biggest thing we found was the community, it was, there were four churches within three blocks of Marion Oaks, of Horizon, and they were all at the school, and they all want to know what they could do. They were willing to throw money at it, they were willing to throw backpacks at it, and we just asked for help. And next year, I'll take some backpacks and some money, but this year, we just wanted help. And the bottom line, I think I was talking to Sharon, and she said, "We're not going to pull this off. We can't get enough things done, it's not enough, not big enough." And I told her, the only thing that had to get done was backpacks to kids with school supplies, and it's a good day. And as it worked out, six hundred kids, we did have a bounce house, it rained though, I was looking for the bounce house, but it was, it was a great event, and the best thing was, it was the parents that came out and got to meet us, and what was different, what's the same, what are the expectations, and that's a good place to start.
May I say something else? And we can't, sir, we can't like even go forward without thinking the community of Summer Glen, because even though they didn't have their supplies to us in time for the back-to-school bash, they brought their school supplies to us on Monday, and so now we have more supplies to give out to our students, and we are very appreciative for that. And as we're like recruiting and talking to community members, I said, "Is the only thing you do is give us backpacks? Can you do something else?" So we have another meeting set up, so that way we can figure out which ones of those folks in the community might have an engineering degree, and they might want to come in and help us with our math lessons, or anything like that. So we're really excited about all of the different people who've come and rallied around us to kind of help us newbies in the community make those schools great. But while I'm up here, I want to introduce my two assistant principals, Victoria Thomas and also Viva Adams.
So my turn. I will, I will echo the sentiment that the proactive piece, I know that we've all worked hard over the summer to make this happen, but also the families, like, like Dr. or Mr. Mayor had said, they're knocking at our doors, they want to meet us, they're anxious to get in, which is so refreshing, and we're riding those coattails. And so we really have opened up our doors to bring those, the outside community in and the families in, and keeping them abreast of events and involved in what their child will be exposed to on a daily basis with Sky Alerts and newsletters and all that good stuff. So it's very refreshing for the community, you can feel the vibes. I know at the event, it was amazing, each, you know, getting to meet the kiddos and then working together on this project was a lot of fun. So I appreciate Dr. Mayor coming out and Madam Chair, Ms. King coming out, it was a great day, and, and yeah, we had a lot of fun. So I'm going to introduce my two APs, Pam Lacy and Rebecca Miller.
Thank you. Can I make a call? Yes, okay. We can, Ms. McCall, you have a comment?
I do, I just want to say thank you. I have been researching family engagement in schools across the country, and the three of you have done it right. Thank you so much. They need to connect with their schools, going out into the community, I like the partnerships that you're forming. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I apologize for not being there, I was out of town on that day, but you're doing it so right, and engaging your families, going to them, those that are not comfortable in the school setting, making them comfortable with you before they go into the school setting. Excellent, superb, thank you.
Well, and another thing if I can add, we, because we do feed into, yeah, we do, we do feed into Horizon Academy, so we've all incorporated the big three as our PBS and school-wide expectations, so that verbiage and that common language is the same, not only for the students, but for the parents, because we know the predictability piece is huge. And also, we, at the elementary level, are doing a lot of collaboration, so that way, you know, the students that do feed into HAMMO are, you know, getting what they need in order to be prepared when they go to middle school. It's been a lot of fun.
Mr. James?
I did call some of you, and some of you I did talk with, and I want to commend all of you for a wonderful job. But I have to, and y'all don't take this wrong, but I have to point at Glenn Jones back there. I think Glenn Jones probably have more hours than any of us, because he started his career over at Dunellen Middle School, and he was moved over to Horizon. And when I really want to know what's going on about with a kid or something like that, I would call Glenn. It's like I really was, was in the middle of nowhere, but I wanted to be there, and I called Glenn to find out how it was going. So Glenn knew exactly what was occurring, and he always managed to keep us abreast. And he's your link to the community, if y'all didn't know that, I think you did. And he's the one, that's a tremendous cook, by the way.
Oh.
Okay, and his way of bringing staff together, and I've seen it and I've witnessed these things, that he is in charge of your faculty luncheons, and then he make everything go. I'm just, I'm just putting work on Glenn, but I'm just trying to tell you, if y'all really want to make it work, and I know, I've seen his work, and I've seen how he can bring communities together. And Glenn, how many more years you have now?
Um, after August, after September 10th, I'm on my mark.
And I said that because at some point, I think all of us should recognize, really, our employers that have really have done a good job for us over the years in all of our community. And this little thing about us having our school divided into sections that go from Dunellen all the way over to Westport, all the way down to Marion Oaks, so it is, it is an amazing thing, and I want to commend you guys for working together. Good job.
Ms. Boynton?
Thank you all too. I want to ask the Chair, Chairman, could you come in and get a picture, because that was something, to have them come in?
Oh, they want to get a picture. Yeah, as soon as we finish talking, we'll let them come in for a picture. Ms. Stacy, did you?
I would just like to echo the things that my board members, my fellow board members have had to say. The energy is really unique. I've been a parent in this school system for, I don't know how long, since the nineteen eight, how long Shay, since the nineteen eighties? And, and then, of course, on the school board for five years. And it is a new day, and we all worked hard to see this day come. And I want to thank Dr. Meara for following through for her, with her promises to me that this would be a great school system, and I do believe we are definitely on our way. Just the energy, and I look at the people, Dr. Dewise and Mr. Mayor and my precious Shay, I look at the people there, and then the people that you have that I don't know. And I know you guys, you know, I know of you, I know you guys and gals. And it's just so exciting the way you've teamed up with the energy you've got, and the placements, where the people were put that needed to be together, it's like the energies are matched perfectly. We have a guy in the middle and a girl on both sides, how could you fail? How can you fail? They're holding you up, you're going to do great. So congratulations, and continue on, and we'll be out to visit, thank you so much.
One other little thing I'd just like to share, now, Dr. Grantham is not complete. We got land down there for high school, and I just want to keep all of y'all, keep it in mind, we do have land down there for high school. You got the elementary, middle, and there's room down there for high school. I just wanted, I just wanted to bring, if we go make it complete, there's room, we're planning ahead, I just want y'all to know that.
That was good. I've heard many words tonight, and excitement is what stuck out to me, and I was lucky enough to, the very first meeting with Dr. Dewise and Mr. Mayor, I think Ms. Gwen wasn't there yet, Carrie Coats, where's she at tonight? She couldn't make it, or?
She's not feeling well.
She's not feeling well, okay, because I do not want to go any further without acknowledging Ms. Coats, because Ms. Coats took initiative to reach out, and actually, it began with Suzie McGuire, and Ms. Coats were there talking about how we could combine the three schools into the community, and they, you know, talked about a few ideas like Peach Jar and different things like that. And then this summer, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Dewise met up and were meeting with Ms. Coats and Ms. McGuire, and the energy, you were right, it was exciting. Mr. Mayor and Dr. Dewise, they were bouncing off each other, and they're like backpacks and food, and I was like, "This is great." It was just really exciting, because it was kind of a last-minute thing, but it was wonderful. And when Mr. Mayor invited us out, he's like, "It's probably not going to be a big deal, it's the first one we're having." And then we showed up, and there was families everywhere. And what a terrific way to begin the school year with our students and our parents having a great moment like that, you know, as a first contact with the principals and administrators or teachers and everyone. And Mr. Jones corrected me that day that there's fabulous five, or is it four? The fabulous four?
It's the fab four.
It's the fab four. There's, so Mr. Jones has some help, by the way, they're called the fab four. But it was just a great experience, and I thank you guys, I can't wait to see what you guys do this year. And good luck, Thursday's right around that corner, and you guys are going to be great. All right, and then if you guys don't mind, if you can come up and have your picture taken.
The board members, I'm going to ask you to...
Yeah, he's shining. He says...
Everybody's looking right here, and one, two, three, one more, one, two, three.
Wait, can we get one with Suzanne?
Yes. Now that I've taken them.
Just delete them.
I'll maybe post to Twitter right now. Shortly.
Lime green.
Here we go, one, two, three, one more, and one, two, three, great job.
Wait, can we get one with Suzanne?
Yes. Now that I've taken them.
Just delete them.
I'll maybe post to Twitter right now. Shortly.
Lime green.
Here we go, one, two, three, one more, and one, two, three, great job.
Mr. Ken Mcateer, Director of Secondary Education, is here to recognize a generous donation from Ford Lincoln of Ocala.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, Ms. Flockheder, and Mr. Gibbs. I am very excited to be here, and I want to introduce a couple of folks. Before we get started, this is Ginger Cruz, she is the current principal at Westport High School, and this is Tom Mailes, he's the Director of Marketing for Ford Lincoln of Ocala. And I am the Director of Secondary Education, but in a past life, I was the principal at Westport High School, and this whole thing started, I guess, in late January or early February, Dr. Mayor reached out to me and said, "How would you like to have an opportunity to work with the community?" And I said, "That sounds awesome." And then she told me that money was involved, and as a high school principal, that makes it even better when you have a partnership with the community and you can also raise money for students. And that was one of the wonderful things that came from this partnership. On April 15th, which was Easter weekend, we were able to raise about a little bit over seven thousand, we'll see the exact check in a moment, seven thousand dollars for four of our programs at Westport High School. And I have to give a shout out to the leaders of those programs, because they were the people that really got the community involved, got their students involved, got their parents involved, got the grandparents, we had On Top of the World out there, we had, we had the whole west side, had people coming from the east side, we had people all over coming out to test drive Lincoln products with money that went to Westport High School directly. So it was awesome. I had to give a shout out to our Activities Director at Westport High School, Vicki Craig, our Marion County Center for the Arts Coordinator, Lori Reader, our Athletic Director, Lyle Livingston, and our JROTC Commander, Lieutenant Colonel Robert Iraick. They were the folks that really got their folks out, and what we did is, none of this money went back to the school's own internal accounts, it went directly into those four groups for them to divide up among the folks under them to make sure that all the clubs, all the sports, the JROTC program, all the arts programs were recognized together. And again, it was twenty dollars a test drive, and we expected, you know, we might, it was Easter weekend, we might have a hundred and fifty people, and I think we had close to four hundred by the time we were through. And we had, it was twenty dollars up to six thousand dollars, and you got twenty dollars for a bonus ride after you drove one of these wonderful sixty to seventy thousand dollar Lincoln vehicles, you know, nicely priced, by the way. But, you know, they were wonderful. They, if you, if you drove a Lincoln Continental with the back massage and the whole thing, you got an extra twenty dollars for Westport High School, and we had lots of folks that were involved. And I can tell you, I had a lot of wonderful jobs during my time as a principal at Dunellen High School and Westport High School. One of my favorites was being the car parker for an event, because I got to drive lots of different vehicles over and over again to put them into place, so it really, really was a wonderful thing. We started at seven in the morning, left at seven that evening, and we did the community involvement and outreach from our school community, our students getting volunteer hours, as well as the overall community was just phenomenal. So it was really win-win for everyone, because our students obviously benefited from the volunteer hours, from the exposure to community outreach, as well as from the actual funds, but we got lots of parents, lots of community members that may not have come on our campus to see the wonderful... to see the wonderful things that our young people can do in service learning. And that's really what it was all about. So I'm going to introduce Tom now, and he's going to talk a little bit more about the whole process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Board Members. Ford, the Ford and Lincoln Motor Company established a program that provides dealerships an opportunity to give back and express their gratitude and support for education, charities, and local community organizations. These fundraising events are focused on fun and effectiveness. Ford has two events, Drive for Your School and Drive for Your Community. Lincoln's program is titled Driven to Give, and combined, these events have raised over $35 million for schools, charities, and community organizations around the nation. Over the years, the team at Ford Lincoln of Ocala has been a proud supporter of education in Marion County and has generously donated dollars and hours beyond these events and will continue to do so. I have personally hosted many of these such events and witnessed the enthusiasm and effort put into reaching a goal. After all, these drive events could potentially raise $6,000 to $8,000 simply by inviting parents, faculty, and community to come out and test drive a beautiful new Ford or Lincoln vehicle. Earlier this year, Westport High School hosted a Lincoln Driven to Give event. And I have to say, I've never seen more dedicated enthusiastic group of students, faculty work so hard to reach their goal. So on behalf of the team at Ford Lincoln of Ocala, it gives me great pleasure to present Westport High School with this check in the amount of $7,180. Not bad for one day's work.
The next event will be Forest High School in November.
November.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am honored, we're a Ford family, so I'm like, all right. It just even makes me happier. Thank, thank you. Okay, we're going to move along with Mr. Mark Vianello, Executive Director of Career and Technical Education. Please share the recent incident that occurred during an athletic event resulting in a community effort with Marion Technical College.
That was a great story, and we have another great story to follow that. Good evening, Dr. Mayer, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members. We're awfully proud of Marion Technical College. Marion Technical College is helping to meet the employment needs of our community. There's no doubt about that. You know, I like the word relevance. I love me some relevance. And tonight, we're going to, we're going to tell, share a story that gives a little bit of a twist to the word relevance and to the meaning of the word relevance. The story could have been very tragic, but it ended up being a very happy story. So I'm going to bring up two very special ladies. Cheryl Sermons. Mrs. Sermons is our Program Director for all of our health programs at Marion Technical College. And Mrs. Lynn Weber. Mrs. Weber oversees, helps to oversee the nursing program, and she's one of our instructors at Marion Technical College. So they will start to fill you in on the rest of the story.
Good evening, Dr. Mayer and Board Members. Last month, the lives of one young man and his family were forever changed. By the grace of God, they were changed for good. Had there not been one coach and two nurses in the stands at a youth baseball game one evening who knew CPR, we wouldn't be here today to tell you this story. The young man is Patrick Plunkett, and his story has begun a movement to provide CPR to coaches, umpires, and other volunteers, and AEDs to ballparks. Marion Technical College feels very blessed to have a role in this movement. And I am honored to introduce to you the father of Patrick Plunkett, who will share his family's story and vision that is only possible because two people knew CPR. Please welcome Mr. Pat Plunkett.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This is Patrick. Six and a half weeks ago, we were playing in the state baseball tournament at Scott Kerrigan. Patrick was pitching in the third inning. He had a ball hit back at him, struck him at the top side of his heart, and he suffered what was called, an incident called commotio cordis. It causes a perfectly healthy child to go into cardiac arrest. Your prayer, Dr. Mayer, was awesome because it really touched my heart. But because of three people actually that knew what to do with CPR saved Patrick's life. Not only saved it, but I'm a firm believer, because there was such quick action, Patrick today has no heart damage whatsoever. I've done a little research on commotio cordis, and there is almost always damage. Patrick had none, absolutely none. We're waiting for one more stress test from Shands, and then he's clear to start playing baseball again. I have, my family has done, we've set up a couple of classes, so we've already trained 30 coaches and umpires in getting them CPR and AED certified. We'd like to continue that movement through Marion Technical, which was great in helping us through that. On a side note, I've also found that in my research, that 42 of 50 states, you have to, in order to graduate high school, you have to have CPR and AED training. Currently, Florida is not one of them. I believe it is on the legislation, legislature now, and I think that would be a wonderful thing for all high school students to learn how to do. It truly is. What happened to Patrick is unusual for a perfectly healthy child, but I know for a lot of us, especially as we get older, we could always use it. Thank you for your time.
Do you have any comment?
Good evening, Board Members. I just want to say this is a home run. We've hit a home run with this, under the leadership of Dr. Mayer, Mr. Carpenter, and Mr. Vianello, Marion Technical College and the Plunkett family together has hit a home run for the community. And it is our hope that a spark has been lit and more people will step up to the plate and learn CPR and save lives. Thank you.
Patrick, we're very glad you're okay. And have a great school year, and we hope you get back to baseball real soon. Thank you, Mr. Plunkett, for what your family's doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Just for Mark, at one point, we used to have the yellow bus. That don't exist anymore, where all the kids, at one point, would get, would have CPR training. The yellow bus, you remember the yellow bus that come up and pull up behind all the school?
Yeah, I do remember. That was a while ago.
Okay. Great that we are looking at doing it again, because I think this is something that we should do. Because that's just one of the little things that I just know, we're just happy to be a part of and having to provide the opportunity for our school system to really show people what we are about. It's a great thing. Thank you.
It is a great thing. And Patrick, you are a walking miracle, and we are so grateful that you are here today. And the lesson to be learned is that this community is going to take the steps back again. I guess it was there, but I wasn't around then either. But taking the steps to make sure that key people, you know, know this technique that can save lives. And Mr. Plunkett, thank you for taking that initiative, and Mr. Vianello, and just the great team. This is awesome, so. God, you're here. Thank you.
Can you now know CPR?
You know it now? That's, that's, that's right. That's right. That's awesome. So thank you for coming in and sharing with our community. Okay. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Florida's Sunshine Law, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the school board's assistant no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt. Based on time consideration, the school board, by majority vote, can decide to limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten presentation times, move time to a different position on tonight's agenda, or eliminate the public comment time for this meeting and any other. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees must conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks, slanderous statements, and profanity are strictly prohibited. Unsolicited commercial solicitations are also prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. Keep in mind for future meetings that speakers may use handouts or audiovisual presentations, but only if they are provided at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. They must also have a total length of five minutes or less. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the school board's requirements.
Thank you. Public comment on Francis Marion Military Academy will be allowed after the presentation and board discussion later in the meeting. Ms. Flacketter, do we have any?
Lisa Fontaine. My address is 3999 Southeast 38th Loop, Ocala, Florida, 34480. As a teacher at Wyamina Park Elementary School, the past two weeks have been heartbreaking. I received a phone call that announced the state of Florida had determined I was ineffective teacher and would be removed from my position immediately based on something called a VAM score. A magic number the Department of Education attaches to a teacher based on high-stakes student test scores. No one can explain what a VAM score really is or how they get it. This happened to six other teachers at my school. Since then, I have watched our school being torn apart. First the teachers, and then the very next day, the entire administration was released. You see, I work at the F school, Wyamina Park. The school with 100% free lunch, the school that had 23 of my 39 students change from the first day of school until the last. The school without running water in more than half the classrooms and no bathrooms. The school that is housed in more portables than brick and mortar buildings. The school that was built for 300 students, but last year, we had almost 750. The school that was underfunded, the school without basic technology. The school that couldn't fund basic teaching necessities like a board to write on in my room or a pencil sharpener. The school that didn't have the educational programs and support other struggling schools were given. My profession, the one I went to college for, the one I am so passionate about, took a huge hit. As educators, we take so much pride in our work. We live it, we breathe it, just ask our families. We definitely put our sweat and tears into it. So as educators, when we are told we are ineffective, we begin second guessing our career choice. We take it personally. We begin questioning our worth as educators. After many cheers and a lot of pep talks, this is what I came to realize. Yes, Wyamina received an F. What's that F didn't say? We worked our hearts out. We funded our own classrooms, we wrote grants, we found volunteers, we cared, we loved, we made a difference. We made sure our students knew they mattered, and we did what was best for our kids. It is a sad day in education when a test score trumps what is best for children. That was supposed to be the end of my speech for tonight. I wrote that two days after I was declared ineffective. The fallout from receiving an F at our school has been catastrophic. We lost six teachers that first day, then the administration the next day, then students, and then other teachers decided to leave. Right now, there is only one remaining fourth or fifth grade teacher from last year. All the rest were removed. Things have kind of settled down for a few days until yesterday morning at 11 o'clock. The newest round of magic VAM scores were released. Yesterday, three days before the start of school, two more teachers were removed from our school for VAM scores. The state of Florida, in their infinite wisdom, slashed teachers again. We lost two, I'm sorry. Yesterday, we had 13 teaching positions open, 13, three days before school starts. They're not going to get filled. There aren't teachers out there. Some classes, not assigned a teacher, have been dissolved, and those students placed in other classes already full. So now we have 26 students in a classroom, breaking the class size amendment. That sounds like an effective plan. I did get my position back when I proved that not only was I not ineffective, but the state had deposited a check in my account because I had been declared a highly effective teacher. Upon further investigation, it was an error. How many other errors have been made that can ruin careers and devastate reputations based on something called a VAM score that no one can explain to us? F is for furious and frustrated. I'm wondering why you, as public school board members, don't appear to be furious about what has happened to the F school under your direction? Why aren't you frustrated with Tallahassee and speaking up for the little people of Wyamina? Funding, another F word. Why are some of you choosing to take funds away from public schools like Wyamina and give them to the charter schools? Why don't the students under your direction come first? F stands for frustrated, furious, and fed up. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Flacketter, before we move on, I'm going to ask for a work session on what has happened with these VAM scores. I want to know, I want to know what has happened in Tallahassee. I want to know what's happened in Marion County, what we have control of, what we're not, but we're going to be an informed board. And I also would like to request another work session on strictly Wyamina Park. These conditions that were stated today, I hate to say it, it was not on, I can't speak for the board, I'm going to speak for myself, it was not on my radar until now, but it is on my radar. So I want us to have a work session on that. I want to know about the teachers, how many teachers they have, what plan is in place to make sure we have teachers. I want to know if these classrooms have basic technology, boards, and the necessary items for these teachers to teach these students.
Is it okay if I walk up with them?
Yes.
My name is Anthony Roberts. 2247 Northwest 33rd Avenue, Ocala, Florida. And I feel bad for the teachers because they got moved and I have to go to a different school. school. And I'm sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other?
That's the rest of them are Francis Marion.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, C eight-point-one dash C one-seven dash nine, as submitted? Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye, and those that oppose, like, sign. And the motion passed five-zero. At this time, I recognize Superintendent Mayor regarding an item for just cause.
Thank you. In order to permit transfer of currently enrolled students to establish programs with a proven record of academic success, board members must formally determine whether Francis Marion Military Academy will remain open or whether actions to implement closing shall begin due to school management and student academic achievement concerns.
I declare just cause. May I have a motion to approve initiating the termination process for Francis Marion Military Academy Charter School?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Mr. James. Superintendent Mayor, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. It's with a heavy heart and a resolute sense of duty that I bring this motion to the board this evening. You all know that I am the product of a military family, and perhaps no county in this state or any other state has a prouder tradition of welcoming military veterans and their families to prosper among us than right here in Marion County. There is no question that a special school steeped in military tradition and operated as a training ground for young people who need discipline and focus should be right here. However, Francis Marion Military Academy is not the solution to this need. Whether it is the litany of changes in leadership, its constant struggle with financial stability, a regretful and very public instance of student abuse, or most certainly a lack of academic accountability, the very purpose of educating young men and women to prepare them for their next choice in life, this school has repeatedly failed its student and its own mission. We have reviewed record of their audits, as has the board, since two thousand nine and found their financial management to have been wanting year after year. They would ask us to believe they are now in the black, yet they have a balance only because of two reasons. First, they were permitted to write off a loan from a board member. Let's reflect back that five out of eight financial reports, which are public record, which previous board members have reviewed as sponsor of Francis Marion, as you are of all charter schools, publicly declared a financial emergency that is written on the audit, including underpaying their JROTC instructor in June twenty-fifteen and not paying staff in twenty-thirteen for two pay periods. And as of the twenty-fifteen-sixteen school year, on these audits, which are public record, which have been reviewed by the sponsor, which is the school board, it says that their employees are leased. They're not hired. They are leased through a leasing company. The second reason that they are in the black, so they say, are because they are held to a lower standard of faculty certification requirements, which is in-state statute. So they are following statute. But if we reflect back on the previous work session where they said that that's changing now and that they have hired somebody, that we use the term pedagogical expert, somebody to increase their academics. Up until that time, they had refused to hire the very people who can ensure their own academic success, but they did hire somebody, as they said, and this past few days have been professional development leader at the school. She sent this on Thursday, August third. It's from Kimmy West to Amanda Steckman, and Amanda's in charge of school counseling. "Hey there, Amanda. Hope you had a great summer. Just finished speaking with Carolyn, who's my admin assistant, and realized that Monday, August seventh, when they were to have their PD, that Monday, the seventh of August, is not going to be a convenient day for us to attend the in-service. That day is extremely busy around here as FMMA orientation begins right after lunch. Obviously, there will be final tasks to complete in the morning to prepare for orientation. Do hope you will send us the information needed to keep us apprised, apprised, of the latest on data-driven school counseling as well as human trafficking. Thank you for your understanding. Wishing you a great year." I just need to pause off the script we wrote to go back, as I think of them sitting in the front row, saying, "Things have changed, and they're going to be at the table with us, and they're committed to academics," but it wasn't convenient for them to send anybody to professional development. Our schools were a little busy, too. I think Wyamina Park was a little busy, weren't you, getting ready? Okay. We owe our students, all of our students, the very best we can provide. And as those emails that were public record, shared at the previous work session, we've been offering for years. Our junior ROTC programs offer what Francis Marion Military Academy claims to offer. However, our schools implement more efficiently and effectively. We can no longer tolerate experimentation at the expense of student learning. The number of successful graduates from this program is woefully small. As you heard, we have recently taken effective action to deal with our traditional schools that do not measure up, and we should do no less here. We do have successful charter schools, McIntosh, operating in Marion County, but Francis Military Academy is not one of them. Let me be very clear. Marion County Public Schools did not fail Francis Marion Military Academy. The lack of leadership and accountability and the innumerable excuses made by Francis Marion is what failed those children, not Marion County Public Schools. Board, you can be remembered as the board who had the courage to take effective action, or you can be remembered as the board who kicked the cannon down the road yet another year for mediocrity at the taxpayers and, more importantly, the students' expense. I implore you, help us chart a new course for these students and end the charade that has gone on for almost a decade. Please vote to begin the termination process for this charter school so we can move on, continuing to advance the district mandate for all students, including those now attending Francis Marion Military Academy. Thank you.
Is there any board discussion, Ms. Stacy?
I look back at some of the stuff that came to me from the district on Francis Marion, and we've been following it. The reason they didn't come to the work staff development on Monday was because they didn't know about it until the end of the week. They already had their open house scheduled from the end of the year for that Monday. Apparently, there was the assumption here that they would be closed down, so they didn't receive the information on the staff development for Monday and the schedule and everything until the end of the week. So to change their entire, to contact a couple hundred families and tell them, "By the way, you can't come for orientation on Monday to meet your teachers," on Friday, to make that phone call to everyone, and hope that they got them, would really be incompetent. And so they chose to put the students first, and they have a year to work on the others. And as I look back at some of the stuff that's gone on, you know, over there, the newspaper, you guys printed that only three kids were up for graduation and led this whole thing to believe that only three kids at the school were up for graduation. Were sixty-seven percent of the kids graduated? Couple of years ago, only eighty percent graduated at North Marion, and had they not taken a good number of them out and dumped them into homeschooling to get them off the cohort, they probably would have been a seventy percent graduation rate, too. But the implication, then to say in the newspaper, the students, we saw them coming out, the school district said they saw them coming out of a closet, male and female. There is no closet in that portable. Like a third, I'm telling you, you need to check your stuff out before you print it in, sir. A third to a half the portable's cut in half, and it's like a large storage room. The reason, so they were not in a closet, but the connotation to make it such that there was not really a, you know, that was never changed. They did change it a little bit on the last story, and I don't remember what they called it. They did call, go back to calling it a storage room, but they took the closet away. Because the closet, you think of young people smashed together in this little room, and it wasn't like that. But maybe, I know wordsmithing and the perfect verbiage sometimes makes things work in our favor. And then there was the story about the teacher was teaching two classes, and the name of the teacher and this and that. And finally, when I drilled and drilled and drilled, Dr. Grantham shared with me, "Well, we know it was an administrative error, that they had not put the person that was in the classroom as a substitute instead of a teacher." And they had an administrative, well, that's what you told me, you know, I'm sure it's on tape. There was an administrative error on why that was listed that way. Because we have substitutes that finish out the year all the time, and they are noted as the teacher of record, and that was the flaw in Francis Marion's. They did not put the substitute as the teacher of record. That was an administrative error. And then we had...
I'm sorry, Dr. Grantham, should I have spoken?
And so there were some different ways that things were worded, like the kids were in a locked room and that they were all locked in. Well, the reason the door was locked to the hallway was because the ROTC officer had the back door, he was at the back of the building, he was working in that way, so the students that weren't supposed to be in the room couldn't enter from the front. He was in the back so he could see if anyone was coming in. So there was lots of reasons for why things were. And then today, I received this letter about the EB five visa program. I'm very involved in charter school government. I understand charter school government. Charter schools and businesses and, like, convention centers, like the big convention center in New York was built through EB five visa immigration paperwork, where it's probably one of the most highly regulated programs that we have. It's been around, I don't know, probably since the late nineteen-nineties, early two-thousands, this program. It's a jobs program for America. And this letter came that implied that the director was all involved in this. He wasn't even involved in it. This was, Tommy had started this. He wanted to be a manager for charter schools, and he started this. If you go on, like, the regional, all of the regional centers, if you go to the immigration website, you will find all the regional centers. In fact, he just gave his up, and, you know, major, major things are built, and they are, if you go to the U.S. Immigration Service and Securities Commission to find out and look this up, and then go on into Homeland Security to find out all about EB five. But that is the way many of the charter schools are funding their program, is through this program where foreign investors invest in our country. I think they have to have ten jobs per, like, five-hundred-thousand dollars of investment or something, to show their worth to get a visa into this country, and instead of coming in here and saying that they're going to be on welfare once they get here. They have to prove that they've invested that much in America. So this program was really started on very good reason, you know, they had very good intentions for starting the EB five. It's billions and billions of dollars' worth of bridges and convention centers across this country have been built through those Chinese investors, and you can invest actually from any country. So there's just all kinds of hearsay and stuff that we get through the board and everything that I just felt like I had to address. I did go out to the school the other day, and I listened to the kids talk. I spoke to some of the students, and they were, the students were there, and it was a day they weren't even supposed to be there. They were all in their camouflage, and it was so interesting to talk to them. And they have a plan where they will be tutoring, the kids say, "We're going to make this," and they're going to tutor their friends that are having problems. And like, if a kid's really good in math, he's going to tutor his friends and help them. They've already got it set up for a tutoring program. This school was invited to, I believe it was the Rays game, to be the color guard on television either this weekend or last weekend. They were the color guard for the Rays baseball. They, you know, and the kids went down and did that. There are some other things I know that are on the plate that they've been invited to. So I really have very good reasons for giving this school a one last chance, and they know it's one last chance. And the students that spoke to me that night, we had one boy, he has no parents at all, and he said the school's completely made a huge difference in his life. And so I think we've hashed this out, you know, last Tuesday night, and we talked about it again at the board meeting Thursday. But I have very, very good reason, Mrs. Mayor, Dr. Mayor, for supporting one more year at this school. And I know that they had issues in two thousand thirteen. I know they had issues in two thousand fifteen. But what's really neat for me, and before you were superintendent, we rehashed all of that. And what's really neat, though, is one of the original movers and shakers of the Francis Marion, Maury Dean, will be there on Thursday for them to raise the flag and start a new day at Francis Marion. He will be there for the celebration. And some of the original founding people that were involved in it, before it got off track, are now starting to come back. And he's very excited, and he will be also working with the school. So there are some good things. Some of the original people are coming back because they know it's their last chance, and they want to make a stab at it. And I feel that the students, I didn't talk to a single student who didn't want to make a second stab at it. So I will be supporting Francis Marion remaining open. Thank you.
Point of order, because my deputy's integrity was called in to question, which professionally I would like to address, and personally, I take a little affront, too. So could you please address the inconsistencies?
Dr. Grantham.
Ms. Stacy, when you say hearsay or imply or infer, I was there. So it's not second-hand knowledge. I was there. What we saw, we told you, we documented. So there's no implications. I was there. I saw it. Without hesitation, without hesitation, the worst school I've ever toured. I'd have to be more blunt than that, and I've been at a lot of schools. For you to say that I was in the classroom when Mr. Dyer ran to get the teacher to come pretend like he was teaching in front of our group, that is not an administrative error. That is, that is just wrong, unethical. That's what that's called. That's lying. And I was there, so it wasn't something I think I saw. I saw it. So when you say, and Ms. Stacy, I do not make excuses in life. I will not make excuses for that school. I will not make excuses for those children.
Did you not share with me last week it was an administrative, that you know?
No, you inferred that, and however you chose, you said, "Oh, it was administrative error." There was a gentleman that came up, and you said, "Watch a tape." I would please watch a tape, Ms. Stacy, because I know what I say. I remember what I say. And I know it was wrong, and they know it was wrong. And I will not, I will not say another excuse is okay for those children. I won't do that. I don't think it's okay to give someone or organization another shot at the expense of the life of a child. You can do that. And you said, "Give them one more." They've had too many more. I wouldn't send my children there, therefore I would not be a hypocrite and ask any child to go there. We have a lot of great programs in this district, and that is not one of them. And you are the board, and you can do whatever you like. But don't think that I heard it. I saw it. I was there. Thank you, ma'am, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. McCall.
I still support that I cannot support the school staying open. The fact that they did not show up to professional development, I don't care if they had an open house or not. They should have had somebody there. The fact that they don't have certified teachers, I think of our students first. There are fabulous ROTC programs at every single one of our high schools. And where they could get the academic education and the ROTC training that they would like to have. It's a financial nightmare. I know they're, they're in the black, but I think there's reasons for that. We cannot allow the school to stay open. It is risking our children's education. I cannot support leaving Francis Marion open.
Ms. Boynton.
Okay. Hello. I know we had a meeting, how I felt. But as I got this item that you put for us, for this, this week, I'm looking, I'm thinking, you know, two days before the students over at Francis Marion Military School. I'm going, I'm going to vote that in. I'm going to say this, I'm going to say this to us. When we talk, everything you know is going to come for everybody to see. So, I'm glad to hear how you feel about this school. But we are the, we are the sponsor of this school. And if we are the sponsor, we should have, should be going over to that school and making sure, not just on, in March, at the end, that you come back and say, oh, we don't. And yes, we all said we wanted this school. As I look at all the students, most of the students that went over to this school, most of them were what? You know what it was? They were ones or twos, one or twos. Have there been, those, they have done so much better that, than I believe in, in my life, that those children, because right now, they were looking at, at As. Now, we have some, some students that have As, Bs, Cs. These are about, I'm talking about the students. I understand you, what the information you were talking about for how many, for about how every month. Because this, when this charter came in, for every time when something was wrong, the other superintendents, the reason why I kept going, because he would look, he would bring our employers from us would come over. Because that's what you're supposed to do for the students. Do we have any students that go to have, to have any Fs? Yes. We have some students. We have some students, students all around us that have had a D, have a, not a D, not cursing, it's something said A. Say F, excuse me. We have, we have, excuse me, y'all. Let me, let me, let me slow it down because I know, you know, my therapy still is saying I'm doing much better. But I need to say, we have some other schools that have Fs and have Ds.
Yes.
Okay?
That improved in a year, like Sunrise and Thessalon, Elbe Santos.
And what, what year are those, what are the ages for those students that you're talking about? These are for high school, right? That's what have over at this charter.
Francis Marion is correct.
Okay.
Yes. And they've had ten years to improve about a.
Most of those children, most of them are going on. So, they've gone on, and they've done, they have, they have already, these are new that came in. Because three or four years ago, those children have already graduated, okay? But, but the thing is this, is that. I, if you, I know we had our meeting and we said, one more year. And I thought that maybe that we would come together, come up another way that we could at least keep our children back in a military school. That's what they wanted. And I, I would like for you to come together with a plan, a plan for those children who want to be a military school academy, just like they have. And you bring the teachers, you bring in everything up from our school, you know what I'm saying? Well, you can come, we can have your own chapter. You do know that, we can get a chatter, a chatter here. You didn't know that.
Of what, Madam? A chapter?
A chatter.
A chapter of our charter.
Charter.
A charter.
Yeah. We can. But, but I'm saying, come back with a plan. Because we asked, I've already, I hope that some, that there's somebody else against me because I already voted to keep sure that we will have this, that one year again. That's all.
Mr. James.
Do we have some people going to speak?
We do. Do you want to hear them speak and then I come back?
Yeah, I want to hear them speak.
Okay, let's do that. Okay, we're going to move along. Is there any public comment regarding Francis Marion Military Academy?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson.
James Sampson, S.A.M.P.S.O.N., twenty-three forty-one Southeast, one-eight-six Terrace in Silver Springs. Attorney Gibbs. Can I not talk about my family at all? I want to talk about this student. Can I just anonymously talk about?
Your child?
Excuse me?
Your child?
Yes.
Yeah, you can mention your own, your.
Okay, thank you. I came here for two reasons, and I don't like seeing that I'm on TV at all because I am very emotional about this student. I got two boys, and I have this daughter. I have a boxing ring in my yard. They went to, one of my, one of my boys went to East Marion. Mac Vianello, cream goes to the top. And Jody Phillips told me this student is the best student he's ever had in his life. Do you mind if I hug her? And I looked at him and I went, what? That's the second time I seen Jody Phillips. And when he come up to me in Forest High School and he said, who is this girl? This board, I want to thank. You just hit the, I didn't know what that was going to say. I brought pictures because my CEO told me you talk too much. The pictures were a million words. You said it, it's a new day. I've never, since nineteen ninety-one, felt better about you, Bobby, about you and Nancy. I don't, I don't know you that well, are you, but you've been at my, you've been at my events, you've supported us, but I'm really optimistic about you. This is what happens when you have a little girl who writes in her diary, she's questioning the meaning of life. What do you do? I knew what to do with the boys. I built a boxing ring in my yard. I don't worry about them, but I worried about her. You guys did this. You guys put her in the Monroe Hospital where she is such a good nurse. At six months, the director wants her to teach the other nurses. You made this happen with this program right here. The ROTC program. She started as an IB student, and she went right over to Forest. And you can see all of the fruit salad on that girl. They, I was at, I was at Van Gogh when the, when the guy said, introduced her for winning some award as Kathleen the Beach Sampson. And I went, what did he just say about my daughter? And she said, sit down, Dad. That's because I did all more pushups and I'm smarter than all them boys. I just want to thank you guys. I just want to tell you, my last one just graduated, but I'm staying in the fight. Dr. Mayor, I want to say one thing, and it's why I'm probably avoiding a little bit more about her. And I'm happy I'm on, I'm on TV. I support you, I admire you, and I will always be there to continue with the new day that I see happening for my kids and the kids that are in my programs with the help of Hank Whittier and Veterans Health and Veterans and our Veterans Family Services. Tonight, I saw you guys have a tough job. But I'm feel confident that it's a new day and that with you in charge, we're going to do very well. Thank you.
No one calls me Henry except Chairman when she's mad at me. So, it's Hank Whittier, and it's two-seventeen Southeast Twenty-Ninth Avenue and W.H.I.T.T.I.E.R. There were some teachers who never thought I could do that. Okay. Listen, we, we, a lot of us came here tonight to tell you, and I heard a lot of, there's some tough decisions to be made. But we wanted to talk to you about how supportive this board has been in the past. It's, it's appropriate. We're here at the beginning of a new school year, looking forward to it. And Nancy, you said it, there's a sense of energy out there, there's a sense of new beginnings. And that's because of you, and it's certainly because of your new superintendent. So, she's reached out very, very strongly to the veteran community. She and I have talked about some collaboration that we can do together. It was sad to hear about Wyoming. I would tell you, and I heard the prayer as well, that there are forty-eight thousand veterans in Marion County. I hope that we can lend a hand to some of those children. So, you need to reach out back to us, and I hope you do. There's some decisions you have to make tonight. I would tell you that what, what the military does believe in is accountability. No excuses, accountability. And you have some outstanding ROTC programs. We talk about the military presence, the military academies. I'm not going to take an issue one way or the other with that, but tell you that your ROTC programs are the best I've seen. They work very, very closely with us. So, we just really came here tonight to tell you, we're looking forward to a, a new beginning this year, a stronger beginning. We've always had a good relationship with the board, always had a good relationship with the superintendent. But there's a new, there is a new change. And there's a new change in Marion County, certainly for the veterans with the Resource Center. But we sense it with, with Heidi. And we've been already working with your, your technical college on a variety of issues. You'll be surprised, and I'm sure Heidi will share that with you before. So, looking forward to an exciting year. You've helped us reach back towards the veteran community, and we'll be glad to help out. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Nancy Rosky.
Nancy Rosky, R.O.S.K.Y., three-eight-two-eight Northeast Seventeenth Street Circle, three-four-four-seven-zero. Within the last few weeks, the Florida Department of Education has come into Marion County and demanded sweeping changes at a struggling school. This school had failed to improve within the timeframe expected by the Department of Education. And as a result, the DOE forced administration and teacher changes. This was all done according to the rules and regulations set forth by the DOE for public schools in the state of Florida. I'm here today because I am concerned that Francis Marion Military Academy, a charter school working under the sponsorship of the Marion County School Board, is not and has not been held to those same standards that the DOE sets for the rest of the traditional public schools. I have been living in Marion County for thirteen years, and during that time, Francis Marion has continually struggled, plagued by scandals in addition to failing to meet their students' curriculum needs. Since Francis Marion receives taxpayer funding, where is their oversight for that funding? If they do not want to answer to the Marion County School Board, who do they answer to? Where is their accountability to the taxpayer? It seems that they want the benefits and money of being a charter without the accountability of being a school. I was at the work session last week when this issue was brought to the attention of the school board. Mr. Adair of Francis Marion stood at this podium and told the school board that he took care of the money first, and now will start concentrating on the curriculum. Why is Francis Marion's first concern about money? Where is their concern for their students and the education? Shouldn't their primary goal be about educating and education? The paper stated recently that Mr. Adair would willingly take part in county trainings to improve Francis Marion if the county goes to them. In any other business, a failing company would not expect anyone to go to them. They would seek out those who were in the best position to help them, and they would go to those people for help. The audacity to demand this shows a continued lack of concern for the students' education. Why does this school board continue to give Francis Marion chance after chance after chance when the schools under the traditional umbrella are not given those same chances? How long will you allow this school to continue to fail the taxpayers and, more importantly, fail the students? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, Madam Chair, and board members. My name is Mark Avery, A.V.E.R.Y. I'm president of the Marion Education Association. I reside at three Diamond Ridge Way, Ocala, Florida, three-four-four-seven-two. I would like to speak tonight about Francis Marion and the work session that I witnessed last week. There are several things that were very troubling during this work session, and I want to make sure that we bring those up and have a chance to discuss them, or at least to consider them. First of all, Mr. Adair got a chance to speak in front of the board. He mentioned about, well, he only had one year as the administrator. Yet, we have administrators in our schools that only had one year, and that didn't seem to matter because DOE took precedence and they had to leave. He stated that it was a public school, a public school in our district, and he said his focus was to fix his finances. This year, he'll work on curriculum. Yet, in our district, our motto is students first. Why would we not expect that of his school? Why don't they have the same motto? They've had four years of a D, and they have a turnaround plan for next year because I sat in here in January when they had to get it approved. Yet, their grade didn't even stay a D, it went to an I. We have schools that improved, such as Evergreen, but they still had to get rid of teachers because of their VAM scores and what DOE said. We didn't give Wyoming Park an extra chance. We didn't give Oak Crest an extra chance. Why would we give this school more chances? Over the last year, we put our teachers at those schools in purgatory. We've had meeting after meeting after meeting telling them, if you don't turn this around, you're going to have to go to another school next year. Places where they've taken to heart, their community schools, as we witnessed earlier tonight. Yet, we went there all year and said, hey, if you don't bring this up, you have to leave. You'll have to go to another school. And those teachers called all the time, and they were stressed, even to the point where in May, we called the teachers in and said, we don't know what your grade's going to be, but we suggest you should transfer so you have a chance to choose a school to go to. Yet, we're not expecting that of this other school. You bring up the point that our, our leadership is amazing, and I know that the stuff they've been doing with their curriculum is amazing, and I agree with that. However, we've invited this other school to come to our trainings for years, not just suddenly, and they've avoided it. They've not come to them. That was one of the issues that was brought up when they had their turnaround plan, that they weren't coming to our trainings and they weren't trying to get better. I have some specific comments that you made last week, Mrs. Stacy. Some of them were very disturbing. You stood, sat there and said that those few graduates were better citizens, better patriots than the other graduating students in our school district.
Some of them.
Well, I took that personally because my daughter graduated last year. As long as some of the people in this room, some of these administrators, they're children who I happen to know. And for you to have the audacity and make statements about other students that you oversee is just.
Yes, no. I said some of them.
Not, that's, that should not even be tolerated. Because we'll go after our employees for doing that. But I guess you have a different.
Referring from attacking.
I apologize. Yes, sir. You also mentioned that you have no obligation to the school district, but to the people of the community. According to State Statute one-zero-zero-point-three-zero, which goes through one-point-zero-zero, one-zero-zero-one-point-five-four, which is about twenty-eight pages long, it talks about what the school district is supposed to, what the school board members are supposed to do. Nowhere in this document does it say anything about the citizens. It says, your job is to the school, the students, and this district. So, I find that, that statement exactly opposite. And so, I wish that, I'd like to ask you to think about your vote. Think about what is fair and just. Treat this school like the other schools. The teachers I represent and the administration were not given extra chances. Why would we give this one one? Your task is to do what, what is right and best for students. Is Francis Marion doing what is best for students? Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, sorry.
Jeffrey Askew.
I'm Jeffrey Askew, Veterans Service Director. I'm also the Veterans Park Administrator. My last name is A.S.K.E.W. My address is one eight three eight Southeast Eighth Avenue, Ocala, Florida. I'm here specifically to talk about the Junior ROTC program, where they turn students into our future leaders and future military members. I myself have been a veteran of twenty-two years. The program that the school board has with the Junior ROTC has been very supportive to the Veterans Park. Each year, we had different schools adopt the Veterans Park under various different superintendents. So I'm here tonight to say that the school board Junior ROTC program does work. They turn men and women into veterans, into leaders. They turn men and women into educators. I myself, being a veteran, had such experience when I was in high school that enabled me to be academically ready to complete my college degree because of Junior ROTC program. Also, I went on to complete a successful year, been twenty-two years in the Navy, retired in the Navy. So the Junior ROTC program, I do support that, and I thank you all for supporting that. I thank you all, each and every one of you all, for supporting the Veterans Park. Each year, for various programs we have, such as the Veterans Day Program, the Memorial Day Program, whether we have Qualley Memorial, or whether it's Vietnam Welcome Home Program, or whether it's the Pearl Harbor Program, the school board is there with the Junior ROTC program. So I'm just here to say I thank you for your previous support, and I'm looking for your support for the Junior ROTC program in this year to come because it does work, and it does provide leaders for the community and military leaders because they are the defenders of freedom, and I would like to see the Junior ROTC program continue. Thank you.
Final speaker is Vicki Trulie.
My name is Vicki Trulie, T R E U L I E B. I reside at forty-seven hundred Southeast Thirty-third Avenue, Ocala, Florida, three four four eight oh. Albert Einstein once said, insanity is repeating the same mistakes and expecting different results. You have been trusted with the responsibility of ensuring the best education for our students in Marion County. And for the most part, you've done a great job. However, one area that keeps besting you is Francis Marion Charter School. This charter school has been riddled with failing grades and scandals, yet it remains operational. We know these students aren't receiving a proper education, yet we continue to allow this charter school to divert funds away from our public schools. Why? If a public school is failing, DOE will come in and impose standards and regulation and whip it into shape. So why haven't we done that to Francis Marion? How long must we give them to change? A ten-year record should be clear evidence of their ineffectiveness, and allowing them to remain open is insanity. While the principal says they'll work on academics this year, shouldn't that have been a focus all along? They've been failing students, and that's not okay. If we're going to give Francis Marion another chance, shouldn't those teachers with needs improvement VAMS also have another chance? Wyamina had the same problems with ones and twos, but they weren't given another chance. And it's clear their children care about them too. If we care about the kids, let's really care about the kids and put them first. Our high schools offer great ROTC programs that also have great academics and more integrity. We can't keep turning a blind eye to something that is hurting our schools and our district. This school continues to tarnish our district's grade and fail our students. It continues to rob our taxpayers of money's best invested elsewhere. Enough is enough. Make the responsible solution. Our students deserve better. Thank you.
Is she our final speaker? Okay. Mr. James, did you...
Yeah. First of all, let me just say this, and let me make sure everybody understands this. Dr. Grantham, I believe in you, my friend. You've done a tremendous job. So I have no problem in terms of what you saw, it's what you saw. But let me say this to the board and to everybody that's here then. I don't want to compare charter schools with public schools, so let's get that, the difference. One of the things that I will say to you more than anything else is that, is this. Francis Marion have a niche. They don't need charter high school we have at this point. They serve a niche. Parents have a choice. With all this information that they've heard tonight, and they've read in the paper, they have a choice whether they can go to Francis Marion, or they can go to any of our high school. They have a choice. So you'll make no mistake about it. When I, when I hear what I'm hearing tonight, every student over there at Francis Marion is there by choice. If I'm not mistaken, they are funded by the FTE that they receive. So if a person want to go to Francis Marion, that's their choice. If they want to go to one of the public schools which have a higher grade, that's their choice. Any of our kids that are in these schools have a choice where they can move. They can do that. Okay, now, this is, this is what I'm coming to. Last year, if this would have come up, when I was, when I was chair, and I had talked with you in reference to the liability issue over there, when we were talking in terms of them not having their proper insurance or at risk, then I would have said, let's close the place down, if it would have shown it this year. But this year, it didn't. They moved into the black. Okay, now, what we're looking at here is them moving into the black, and then all of a sudden, we shut them down after they moved into the black. I'm willing to give these people a shot at doing something with the academics. Now, when I say I'm doing something with the academics, I was over at, over at Howard Academy today, over by Howard Academy, and it was amazing, the number of people that I saw that was involved in it, and involved in what was going on in it. There was something going on there. So when I see these things and saying that we can, we cannot help Francis Marion for this year to determine whether they will move a grade, I cannot accept an I because they have a choice now. If they did all this stuff with the financing, and I know when I talked with, talked to some people in the finance office, and then I read some things that were sent to me, they're in the black. And my position is very clear. They got a year to do it. If they don't do it, we shut them down. That's my point. I don't want to get in here and go to putting apples and putting ROTC programs against one another. That's not what it is. That's not what it is with me. When I look at these youngsters and the parents, and their parents, they have a choice. And they have a choice. And they can utilize their choice at any point. They can bring them back to public school, or they can keep them there. But if they pull them out, then they lose the money. What happened to the schools when they lose the money? That's where I am with it.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to add my comments. Mr. James, I agree with a lot that you said about the niche. I do agree that Francis Marion, I love the concept of that school. But what concerns me is the leadership. And I've only, I've been here since 2014, and it seems like every year since I've been here, there's another reason or another excuse that was brought up, you know, that of why they're not making it. And I do know, back, I believe it was in November 2016, I did hear the promises that they were going to have somebody come to the professional developments and learn. And my concern that is glaring at me is that we did have professional development that was offered to them, and again, they have chose not to come. I find it difficult that not one person from that school could take it upon theirself for a short time, orientation's probably a couple hours. They couldn't come before, no one could come after, no one could be a representative from that school. That glares at me. And, okay, well, still, even if it is an orienta, an all-day orientation, if I knew that my school was at jeopardy, I would see fit. It would, it would happen that somebody would be there representing Francis Marion. But that's just me and my leadership skills, I guess. But what does concern me with the niche is the lack of leadership that I have seen from this administration. It concerns me that if we do give this school, which is a great concept, and it is a charter school, another year, for me personally, I would be doing it at the expense of students and their education. And my role as a school board member is their education. And as one part may be filled, and they may, you know, like to go to this school, are they deserve, are they receiving the education that they deserve? You know, that's where I struggle with this. I do know that our ROTC programs in our public schools are excellent, and I don't want to compare the apples to apples because they're not. They're two totally different schools and stuff. But I will say that I know that our schools are doing well. And so that's why I will be voting no tonight for this school. And another thing that concerns me is that we're talking about this now, but if next year it's brought up again, will it be diluted? You know what I mean? It'll be another year had passed, and what will the reason be then that we choose to give them another year at the expense of our students? So I'm going to end on that note.
Can I just...
And we're going to go, we're going to go ahead and vote. I think it's time for us to vote.
Can we have the motion read so we can clarify exactly what we're voting on?
Yes. Let me pause it.
Approve initiating determination process for Francis Marion Military Academy Charter School. So if you vote yes, you're in favor of close, of starting the termination process.
Okay.
Do we have to vote no if we're against it?
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a question? Well, that's okay, that's okay.
Okay.
So a yes is to, so a yes is to close it.
A no is to keep it open. Correct.
All right, thank you. Is, can I have your vote on there?
It hasn't, it's not up here.
A yes is to close?
I don't think...
It's available. Is to keep it, yes is to close it.
Did you reset that?
Is to keep it open.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I don't have it. So I'm going to vote yes.
Yes. Okay, sorry, I don't know why it's not showing. Okay, I just need Mr. James's vote.
I voted.
Okay, and the motion did not pass with the vote of three, two. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of thirty-one thousand and three dollars fifty-two cents. One thousand dollars to Bellevue High School from Horizon Players, trailer valued at four thousand two hundred ninety dollars to Bellevue High School from the Band Boosters. One thousand three hundred seventeen dollars and two cents to Forest High School from Bart Blessing Management LLC. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Hammett Bowen Elementary School from their business partner, the Church at the Springs via the Public Education Foundation. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Maplewood Elementary School from their business partner, the Church at the Springs via the Public Education Foundation. Seven thousand dollars to Marion Technical College from Marion County Veterans Helping Veterans, Inc. Twelve thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty cents to Shady Hill Elementary School from the Ocala Heart Institute Foundation, Inc. May I have a motion in a second?
Come on.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? Is it up again? Okay, I'll do...
For some reason, yours isn't.
Mine's not.
Everybody's voted for you.
Okay, just vote yes, please. My computer is not happy. Ms. McCall, you want to think, and when, not now, but when I do that? Okay, and the motion passed five, zero. Ms. McCall, would you like to think?
Again, we want to think of all of these businesses that have stepped up to the plate for our schools. We cannot do it without you. The impact that you have on our students' learning is tremendous, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Okay, thank you. There are two administrative brief, briefing and work sessions scheduled for a continued review of the proposed 2017-2018 budget. The meetings are scheduled to begin at nine AM on Wednesday, August ninth, 2017, and Thursday, August seventeenth, 2017, if needed. Okay, so we're going to move along to our comments and concerns. Ms. Pointon will begin with you. Do you have any word comments?
I did have two things, but...
Not today, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I had written down two things. Is it okay?
Yes.
Okay. One is that this school will be on Thursday, and so I decided to do something, and I'm giving one, something, one of it to Mrs. Kelly, a T-shirt that we're going to go out. I don't have it with now, so you can see it, but it is going to be say, be kind, be positive, and that school attendance matters. Okay, so that's one thing we're going to be doing. And also, I just wanted to say, I did to all the teachers, you know, I really had a good time over with the tools of teaching for the foundation. It was really a good time, and to see all those teachers that come out, you know. So I just wanted to say thank you, and that's it. Thanks.
Mr. James?
You know, at some point, I always look back and say, we should have done this, and we should have did this. When I look at the opportunity I had on the thirty-first, I had an opportunity to talk with Dr. Mayer and Dr. Grantham there about a balance scorecard. And just listening to them in terms of their knowledge of what is actually occurring. And Dr. Grantham and I were incredibly impressed with the fact that you knew the man that wrote the book, that was part of the man that wrote the book, and that you have some plans in terms of where we're going with the district. Sometimes, as, as one of the people that has been around a long time, I often have to say woe sometimes. Tonight, I said woe because I believe that if we do the things that we said we could do, we could, we could save Francis Marion. If we do some of the things that we're saying, if we don't, you'll have everything you want to shut it down, and you won't have to rely on somebody else's records from ten years ago. You don't have to rely on nobody else's record because when you look at what your, your proof of your work, then you will have whatever you need to do this. And so when I look at what we're talking about tonight, I am convinced that we're on the right, on the right course, but I don't think we need to take other people's stuff with us. By the same token, I do believe, based on the information that I've gotten from my, just seeing things, and you don't have to be involved with anything to really know that there's something going on. If you, if you drove by Howard Academy today, you know that there was something going on. You know, you didn't have to go in there. And when I look at what we're talking about here, I am not concerned about whether Francis Marion Academy will be open next year because I am convinced that we will have the data and documentation that's, that you cannot adjudicate, or you cannot say that it was not there. And when I see this, and when you have the numbers and things, it's important that we, that we take our time. And when I say this to you, I know we had no choice. Of other people that over at Wyamina Park, there was no choice there. We had to move, we had to do something, and the super did it. Okay, but by the same token, when I look at what we're talking about here, people have choices here. People have choices. And that's what the issue I have with it. I'm not taking away their choices or anything, but they have a choice. You can go there, you don't have to go there because we got good schools. And that's... And that's my whole point in, in terms of all of this. Thank you.
Hey, what I would like to say, I do not believe in people talking to me when I'm in the middle of a board meeting through text or anything. I do not accept text messages or anything during a board meeting. I believe that is illegal for someone to be telling me something that no one else knows. So now that we have done all of our voting, I checked just to see what was coming through. And now that the vote is over, I have a text message that Francis Marion was at the staff development on Monday. They were represented there. And so I'll use my board time to talk about it, because I would have never looked at this prior to a vote so that no one in the room could say I was getting in, other board members not receiving. I believe that's the legal way to do it. So after it's all said and done, I checked my messages just to see what came through, mainly making sure my husband, everything's okay at home. We were at the in-service meetings. I have no idea where that statement came from, it says. Nancy, we had turned, we attended the in-service day. This is so unfair. We attended the training sessions on Monday. That is coming through, so I don't know where our people were, but wrong information was given and I know it was innocent. I know that no one said that in a way to make anything up, and that evidently they kind of went in under the radar, but they were there. So those that voted to continue the school, I have good news, they were there. Okay?
That'll be the first PD they got in five years, so I'm glad they were there.
Well, Ms., Dr. Mayer, when I, when I, you know, you, you had to make that statement back, so I'll make a statement back to you, you know, on the same grounds. When you have a couple hundred families that are choosing to leave a high school in the district, and we're sitting here as a board saying how bad that school is, then what in the mind of the parents is worse at the high school they're fleeing? I think we need to figure that out.
What school is that, ma'am? So I can follow up.
Okay. I don't know. I'm just saying, all the students that are at Francis Marion are allowed to go to a traditional high school and have bus, free busing there and everything. Might be at their neighborhood school, their friends may be there. But when we're sitting here talking about how horrible Francis Marion is, we have 200 families that believe there's something worse at their child's zip code high school that they are fleeing to go to this Francis Marion school.
I thought it was choice to go. I didn't think it was fleeing.
Right, but there's something at their zip code school that they prefer not to go to. So therefore, you know, I don't think we should be talking too much about how terrible the school is, because 200 people have, families have chosen that school over our traditional schools. So maybe we need to try to make all of our schools great.
And we are.
Thank you.
Ms. McCall?
I want to wish everybody a great start to the school year. I want to wish our teachers good luck as you take our babies under your wings and teach them. Parents, please remember to get your kids to bed on time, feed them a good breakfast, and get them to school on time. Students, attending school is very important, so please try to attend every single day. And every single night, we want you reading with your moms and dads. Those who are driving around Marion County starting on Thursday, please be careful. Our children will be at bus stops. Buses will be stopping. Please, please be careful. We want every one of our children to return home safely every single day. Have a great year.
Mr. Gibbs?
Nothing.
Ms. Fluckett? Dr. Mayer?
Officer Wissinger, thanks for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So just remember, school starts Thursday. Are you ready?
Oh, I'm ready.
Are you ready?
The Al Police Department will be out there in the school zones, so.
Oh. Okay, so say that again, sir.
The Al Police Department will be enforcing the law, speeding in the school zones, so all the schools will be covered.
We gotta remember those flashing lights with those buses.
Yes.
Right. Thank you for that, and thanks for watching out for our kids every day, and you're at Fort King Middle, correct?
I love it, too.
Awesome. Thank you for that. That's great. Your happy face, okay. And then you said you'll be back with us in a couple weeks, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. And just a reminder what Officer Wissinger said and what Ms. McCall had alluded to, that the buses will be rolling Thursday morning. So be careful if you're out on the roads driving, and also, parents who have children who ride the buses, just remember that the first couple days, it's safety first and making sure those kids get on the right buses, so things will be delayed a little bit. So be patient with us, because your child's safety is always number one with us. Mr. Mcateer, is he still here? Oh, good, he is. Would you stand, please, sir? We got a letter from the Florida Department of Agriculture, where Mr. Mcateer has been selected to participate in the 2017-18 class of the Agri-science Education Leadership Program. We are so proud of you. This is a huge honor for, for you. Thank you for representing us so well. This is a limited number of people across the state who are asked to participate in this. And thank you again for, for serving the students of our district. We're very proud of you. Thank you very much. We love our ag programs, okay. There have been lots of events, as we've been talking about getting ready for school, and I believe you're gonna talk about one that happened this past weekend at Oak Crest when we were with the families at Deer Run. We were there together. We never did make it to the Bouncy Castle, though.
No, we did not.
Maybe that might be our next adventure. Go to a bounce, go bounce.
Must be it.
Okay, we'll do that. In another one, I was invited to Marion Oaks Elementary with, Ms. Gwynne was here earlier, and she invited me out to do, to meet with the faculty, because they were doing their, their, their pre-service training at the school. And it was my first read aloud for the year. And she asked me to read The Dot. Are you all familiar with The Dot? Okay, it's short, so I, I am gonna take this time to read it. And I am so excited, they, they signed the book for me. Each of the faculty were there. The Dot, and as we get ready for our new school year with our 43,000 kids, this is a powerful reminder for all of our teachers. Art class was over, but Vashti sat glued to her chair. Her paper was empty. Vashti's teacher leaned over the blank paper. Ah, a polar bear in a snowstorm, she said. Very funny, said Vashti. I just can't draw. Her teacher smiled. Just make a mark and see where it takes you. Vashti grabbed a marker and gave the paper a good, strong jab. There. Her teacher picked up the paper and studied it very carefully. Hmm. She pushed the paper toward Vashti and said, now sign it. Vashti thought for a moment. Well, maybe I can't draw, but I can sign my name. The next week, when Vashti walked into art class, she was surprised to see what was hanging above her teacher's desk. It was the little dot she had drawn, her dot, all framed in swirly gold. Hmm, I can make a dot better than that. She opened her never-before-used set of watercolors and set to work. Vashti painted and painted, a yellow dot, a green dot, a red dot, a blue dot. The blue mixed with the red, she discovered that she could make purple. Vashti kept experimenting, lots of little dots in many colors. If I can make little dots, I can make big dots, too. Vashti splashed her colors with a bigger brush on bigger paper to make bigger dots. Vashti even made a dot by not painting a dot. At the school arts show a few weeks later, Vashti's many dots made quite a splash. Vashti noticed a little boy gazing up at her. You're a really great artist. I wish I could draw, he said. I bet you can, said Vashti. Me? Not me. I can't draw a straight line with a ruler. That sounds like what I would say. Vashti smiled. She handed the boy a blank sheet of paper. Show me. The boy's pencil shook as he drew his line. Vashti stared at the boy's squiggle, and then she said, please, sign it. So this year, this Thursday, when our students enter, they're gonna have over 3,000 teachers, and 3,000 more support people, handed them a piece of paper, and supporting them while they sign it. And it's gonna be the first of many signatures that these children make for us this year, and we couldn't be prouder. Thank you.
Thank you. That was good. Okay, well, that was awesome. It's always hard to follow, Dr. Mayer, but you did, you talked a little bit about Oak Crest. So on Saturday morning, Dr. Mayer and I were at Oak Crest with Ms. Linnenbach, I always say her name wrong, and Ms. Howe, and just wonderful, wonderful staff and volunteers, and Mr. McPadden was, it was just a lot of people. But anyways, it was a really fun and exciting morning as these families gathered together, and, and what they would see when they would come in is they had like sharp cuts for boys, and the boys were getting their haircut, and the girls were getting their pretty manicures and getting their fingernails painted, getting all ready for school. And they also gave away some school supplies. They had the bouncy house. They also had another pavilion that they served hot dogs. And it was really, and I almost forgot, I don't know how I almost forgot this. The Vanguard Knights Football Team came up there also and were helping, you know, the boys and directing. And at one point, all the elementary students were kind of like bookend by the high school football players, just sitting on a line. And I was like, how fitting is that, that, you know, you had these high school boys and then the elementary students, and they were just looking up to them. And the volleyball team was there also representing them, and it was just a really special morning. And then after that, I did go also to the back-to-school bash at the Paddock Mall. Ms. Dobbins was there, Ms. Susie McGuire was there, Kevin Christian was there. And I, I know in a couple weeks, I hope that we hear from Kayden and Chance. Should I just save that? I'm gonna save that. I'm gonna save that. But this was a really, some really special things happened with that also. But it was a good turnout with the different high schools, and they had the cheerleaders and just a lot of different booths. And what a great way to get the school year started and spirited. Also, I wanted to say, welcome back to just about everyone. On Thursday, our doors will open, and we will have our students come. And everyone's been working hard this summer. And whether it is the bus driver that is gonna open up those doors and greet our students with a smile and say, good morning, glad you're here, drop them off at the school, we have our receptionists, our secretaries, our parapros, our teachers that have been just working so diligently. They true, truly are the epitome of flexibility. They've had a lot of changes presented with them, and they're just incredible people to take on any and every task that is presented to them to do what is right and what is best for their students. Also, our principals, who will be leading our schools to be that aid district. Dr. Mayer, I keep seeing we're, we're in a district.
We are.
We're in a district. Well, Thursday, we're in a district with this great leadership. So I just want to say, welcome back, and thank you for all you do, and we look forward to supporting you this school year. And I will end on that note. Okay. Before addressing expulsion matters, Ms. Fluckett, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter other than early reentry request?
Amen.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the televised and business portion of this meeting. I declare a brief recess to clear the room prior to further discussion, discussing student discipline matters regarding early reentry requests, and we are recessed at 7:35.
Wendy, want us back, ma'am?
Um, I'll give us ten minutes. 7:45.